I will call this meeting. Public District Budget Hearing to order at seven o'clock PM. Do we need to ascertain whether we have, should we take attendance?
Yes.
Alright, so Lisa, would you please take attendance?
Of course. Joe?
Here.
John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Justin? Justin? Oh, he's here, okay. Jen?
Yes, barely.
Okay.
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Just a little bit.
Is Mike Sinatra here?
I don't see him.
Okay. Julie?
Here.
Peter? Peter? I didn't see him. And Mary?
Here.
Okay, so I have Peter and Mike is absent.
Okay, well, at least we have a quorum of the board, so why don't we go forward with the reading of the warning. Donna, you're on.
Okay. Notice, Chapag Valley Regional School District 12 Public Budget Hearing. Notice is hereby given that a public budget hearing for Regional School District Number 12 will be held virtually on Monday, March 29, 2021, at 7:00 PM. The link for the hearing will be posted on the www-region-12.org website. Greg Cava, Chairman, Board of Education, Chapag Valley Regional School District Number 12.
Thank you. We'll move on to an overview presentation of the budget process and the 2021-2022 Annual Budget for Regional School District 12. Alex McNorton, Board Member of Alex McNorton, Chairman of the Operations and Finance Committee.
Good evening all. While public speaking is my forte, I'll try to introduce you to the thinking that went on in the 2021-2022 Budget for Region 12. On March 22, the Board of Ed voted to approve the Superintendent's Proposed Budget I will try to summarize the process that was used. The Superintendent, Megan Bennett, asked each department to reduce their budget requests by 5%. While this was successful, certain categories went up. If you remember, the 2020-21 Budget, just over $22.8 million, was flat compared to the prior year's budget. This was done with a lot of care and consideration. It was a difficult task, but we were able to accomplish it. In this coming year, we have had many foreseen and unforeseen issues. The COVID crisis put strains on the staff as well as on the numbers. The staff has done a remarkable job of teaching the students under the pressure of COVID. For the most part, we have been able to keep our four facilities open and fully functioning. This was no small feat. The Agri-science Program has proven to be a profound success. Between the state funding and monies from the seven sending towns, Region 12 has been able to credit $803,577 against the Board of Ed's 2021-2022 Operating Budget, thus reducing the total budget requests from the three towns. The money returned is from private tuition-in students as well as dollars actually beyond the credit amounts. The pro-rata share is determined by a percentage of the students from each sending town as of October 1, 2020. With this $803,577 and an increase of only 1.64% to the budget, we will be able to continue the strong education that our students deserve and require. Much of the increase comes from three areas, and I'll briefly outline them. One, capital facilities repairs and improvements. The physical plants have been neglected for several years, and as one of our fellow members likes to say, "The can cannot continue to be kicked down the road." We need to address these issues at this time. Second, existing contracts with staff for salary and benefits constitute 74% of our budget. The average salaries are going up by about 2.5%. Just doing the math, that would be a 1.85% increase to the budget. Finally, COVID has added a financial requirement. It is estimated that COVID will cost the region about $120,000 in the coming year, or another half percent. You can see the cuts were made elsewhere. Nicole Grant, the Director of Finance, has found several cost savings by rearranging different expenses and programs. An example would be the leasing of equipment rather than the outright purchase. While fat has been cut, no muscle has been affected. As a side note, Nicole informed me that we just secured a bond anticipation note, a ban, at a rate of 26 basis points. That is 26/100 of 1%. Region 12 has been able to retain its strong bond rating. The entire 2021-2022 Proposed Budget is available online. I will be asking our Superintendent Megan Bennett and our Director of Finance Nicole Grant to add to their thoughts and comments. Thank you for your interest in our students.
Okay.
Nicole and Megan, why don't I refer to you if you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
First of all, I want to thank you, Alex. I think you did a great job capturing the essence of the budget that we've presented. I think the goal of our budget process has been transparency. We want to make certain that our taxpayers are informed consumers of the educational system. Nicole had actually developed a new appendix. When you look at Appendix C, it does help in order to see exactly what is being spent by department when we're looking at what is the difference between year-to-year expenses. And as we're trying to control for costs, we certainly know that there are costs that we do see increases on, such as the cost of gas, propane, electricity. And so, I really have to thank our administrative team who dug deep, found ways that they could reduce their own budgets in order to make certain that we were not a burden onto our towns. And so, I really have to thank the entire team, and I think we can all applaud Nicole for how she has changed the budget process in our three towns. So Nicole, anything else that you want to share?
Just thank you to Alex and to you also. Megan, I'm really proud of this budget, and I hope that our towns and our staff and our board share that sentiment, and I think that if we can preserve the budget as it is through the vote, we'll be able to do a lot of great things like we always do in our three towns and with our schools next year. So I'm hopeful that the public finds the budget to be up to their standards that they have come to expect from us.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I would entertain any questions or statements concerning the budget. You know, we have a number of members of the public here tonight, and I'd be happy to hear anything they have, any of their comments.
Greg, you need to talk up a little.
All right, I'll try to shout.
Greg, I would like to make a comment.
Yeah, Joan, please.
Joan Lozen, yes. I agree that everybody's done a great job. I don't find fault with anything. I only ask that you reconsider the $450,000 as a line item in the budget, and instead, take that money out of the 1% fund. And I understand what Nicole said about keeping money in there might help our bond or our bond rating, but there are other factors that go into our bond rating, and that's not really the most important point. And I just feel like, you know, as you, the school has been overburdened by COVID costs, so have many of our citizens. And I just don't think it's the right time to include that as a line item in the budget. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ed, go ahead.
And what's the percentage of the budget is paid by Washington? What are the percentages? I think I heard somewhere in the paper that Bridgewater has 20%.
Nicole, do you have those numbers handy?
Given the budget itself.
Hey Greg, for people who don't know him, he should identify himself.
Yeah, that's true. Ed, you should identify yourself for the record.
Ed Wayne Wright, he's a secret agent here in Bridgewater.
And Joan, you're from Washington? I think we've gone dark on this.
That's correct, Greg. I'm from Washington.
Just wanted to get that for the record. Okay, Ed, you've asked about the percentages that each town has.
Yes.
And I believe the budget indicates that it's 45.99% for Washington, 33.69% for Roxbury, and 20.32% for Bridgewater. So you were right, it's just a little over 20% for Bridgewater.
It's 22%?
20.32.
20.32.
Okay.
This number is determined by taking all the students on October 1, adding them together, and that's the denominator, and the numerator is the number from each of the three towns. And it adds up to 100%, of course.
Now, the thing about this budget is that it will, as the population shifts year to year, it shifts the amount of money that each town has to pay. And there have been a number of instances in the past few years where the amount that each town, any individual town has had to pay has gone up, and sometimes it's gone down. And so, that's the other piece of this, because until you actually apply that, you won't know whether your taxes will increase or decrease, whether the town chair will increase or decrease. I don't know if we have those numbers. Yet.
I have one other question. Is it okay to ask a question?
Please, Ed.
How much is the 1% fund? How much is in the 1% fund?
Capital? Ball?
It's full?
Nicole, answer.
The current balance in the 1% fund is $1,039,000.
Did you get that, Ed?
One man, $39,000.
Yes, $1,039,000.
And approximately 1% of the budget is put in each year.
Yes, that's correct. You can't exceed 1%. 1% is the maximum you could put into it, although there's a bill pending in the legislature as we speak, which would, a couple, two years ago, they increased it to 2% for all the municipalities, but they inadvertently, they selected the section of the statute that governs municipal school systems. So like when a town runs their own school system, and they forgot that there are regional school systems, and that bill that's pending is to increase it to 2% for the regional school system. So it may go up to be the 2% fund by October of this year, or July, or whenever they make it effective.
So the one man, $39,000 does not include the $200,000 is going to be contributed in this budget being proposed. Is that right?
Correct.
So there's another 200 and something, $230,000 going to be added.
The amount that's in.
That's, we don't budget for that, Ed.
You don't budget for it?
No. Am I incorrect in that, Nicole?
No, that's correct.
You just collect all the stuff that's left over and put it in there. Is that it?
Correct. We tried to negotiate better savings in order to allow for us to find and capture some of those dollars, yes.
And what is the rationale for not using the 1% fund to pay for improvements in the Burnham Roof? Can you explain that rationale to me?
Sure, I can explain it, Ed. So if you look at it historically at the Capital Reserve Fund, it took us 10 years to build the current balance of $1 million. So if we were to use the 450 of that fund for that project, that would take us that fund back to a point beyond five years, and we would have to start building it again. And my number one priority for that fund is to keep the reserve level high so that we can retain our bond rating. The district, the region currently has the highest bond rating available to regional school districts, and we have been under review by Moody's twice now in the past three years. In both times, Moody's has alluded to the fact that our bond rating remains at that level in part due to that reserve fund.
Okay, Ed, it gives us an opportunity to be prepared for that contingency, which we never know what's going to be. Major things come along unexpectedly, and it's nice to have that cushion and know that you can cover it when it happens. And it will happen at some point.
John? Did I make a correction?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Nicole, when you sent me the 11-year history of the Capital Reserve, the 2020 fund amount was $1,093,297, not $39,000.
Those balances were given at a snapshot in time, but that fund is being used, as you know, from last year's budgetary items that were moved into the fund, so that there's still money coming out of that fund this year.
There was $40,000, $50,000 in capital improvements?
We shifted.
Coming out of the 1% fund?
We shifted. Last year, we shifted, I believe, I don't have the number in front of me, but I believe it's about $162,000. We shifted out of last year's budget to make it flat into the Capital Reserve, and that's currently being spent as those improvements are being made.
That's correct, John. Remember? We talked about that, and that's what we ended up doing.
So Nicole, do you know net of those expenses where the 1% fund will be when you're finished with those? Will it be down at $900,000 or less?
It will touch just below $1 million. I believe it'll be about $983,000.
Any other comments or questions?
Now, was the 1% fund used to refurbish the teacher's room up in Chapag? I think that was done some years ago.
It was done about three or four years ago, but I don't remember whether the 1% fund is where it came out of. We'd have to look.
I mean, that's the purpose of the 1% fund, is used for capital expenses, right?
That's right. The 1% fund has been very helpful to us in terms of dealing. We've had a number, since I've been on the board, we've had a number of problems with the swimming pool that have come up unexpectedly. And that's something you're, you know, you'd not be allowed to build that today. And it's a wonderful community and school resource for us to have. But I don't know how many of you saw the wonderful three, four-minute segment about our athletic teams, and a lot of it was done at the pool. And we've had expenses come up from time to time. We've used it for that. We've used it for other capital improvements when people wanted to keep the budget at a reasonable number. So we've done this in the past, and that's what it's for. So you're right, Ed, that, capital expenditures.
Right. And it's not just for improvements. Quite frankly, it's an emergency or something that comes up. If something happens down the line, we need to know that we don't have to go out to the taxpayers for something that happens that is unexpected. We know that we have aging buildings, and so there are many things that can and have gone wrong. And so, being able to have that fund becomes very important for anything that may come up as well. So it is about financial stability for the region as well as covering for incidentals.
I mean, I think if we had our druthers, we would love to borrow that money. We'd love to put it out to bonding, but we have no authority to do that without going back to the voters, because right now, I don't know, Nicole, what numbers you're seeing, but I'm seeing numbers in the 1.5, 1.5, 1.6 range on long-term bonds. And believe me, that's what you do, because that's such cheap money. It makes sense to do it. But unfortunately, it would be a process, and for a few hundred thousand dollars, you really don't want to go through that bonding process because it's expensive. We have to pay legal fees and other charges in order to do it. So if we had had more projects to line up, maybe we could have gone that route, but we didn't. And so, that's why we wanted to take it. We wanted to see it in the budget if we could handle it, rather than hitting the 1% fund for the purposes of preserving our bond rating and serving that fund for things that are really difficult to carry.
I would like to add one editorial comment, and then I'm going to sign off and watch a basketball game. So I certainly appreciate the voters from Roxbury and Washington for paying 80% of this improvements to the Burnham Roof. And that's the way it appears that by putting it in the budget, you're basically saying that 80% of the Burnham Roof improvements are going to be paid for by the Roxbury and Washington voters. And of course, Bridgewater will cover their 20%, of course.
Ed, you've got to remember that several years ago, we did the Washington Primary School, and at that time, Roxbury and Bridgewater paid for the Washington School, so.
And so, it's been done before.
And sometimes it's Bridgewater, sometimes it's Roxbury, sometimes it's Washington.
Yeah, we are a region, and we do pick up those costs, because those elementary schools are gems, and they are the thing that prepares our kids for our middle high school, and then from there on out into success and in further learning or the working world. And so, it's critical we do that. I think you're right, Ed. That's a good observation that this year that those two towns are going to be picking up 80% of that cost.
Greg, Jim Breton, can I make a comment?
Yes, Jim.
First of all, Ed, you're welcome. UConn's winning. To address Joan's concerns, Joan, we're going to submit a budget in the next couple of weeks to the Board of Finance that is completely flat, so there'll be no tax increases in Washington. My board is very appreciative of the administration and the Board of Education's efforts to maintain the facilities while still giving the kids a great education. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breton.
Yes, very much, very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing done. I would, if no one objects, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Present time.
Don't move.
Move, if there are seconds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Closed? Faining? It sounds like it's unanimous. The Public District Budget Hearing is adjourned. And then, at this hour of 7:25, I will convene the Board of Education Special Meeting. And I think we ought to call attendance again. Madam Secretary, Lisa?
Okay. Joe?
Here.
John? John?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Yeah.
Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
We have a full board.
Very good. Thank you all again for everyone being here. It's been really that way for most of our meetings. It's wonderful. The first item on the agenda is the discussion of the 2021-22 Budget. And I would. Yeah?
I make a motion the budget be approved as presented by the Superintendent.
Okay, motion made, or a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pony. Is there further discussion? Does anyone want to make any comments? John?
Yes. Especially in light of Joan Lozen's comments and Ed Wayne Wright's comments, I feel that I'm a board member that represents all of Region 12. And even though Washington may not experience an increase in their taxes, Roxbury certainly will. So I'd like to make a comment and then a motion.
Okay.
Please allow me a few minutes to present a brief history of the circumstances which led to using the 1% Capital Reserve for funding Region 12 renovation and replacement projects four times in the past five years. Keep in mind that during the period between 2016 and 2018, the region was facing the prospect of over $15,250,000 in long-term debt before state grant reimbursement or the holdback of $3,672,477, thus resulting in $11,600,000 for bonding over a 20-year period. During the public comment at the April 6, 2016, Region 12 School Budget Hearing, Ed Wayne Wright and First Selectman Curtis Reed, both from Bridgewater, both Bridgewater residents, urged Board members to remove $250,000 from the proposed 2016-2017 budget that was earmarked for the teacher-student work area renovation, and pay for the improvements out of the 1% fund. Later on that same evening, then Treasurer Valerie Anderson made a motion to remove $250,000 from the proposed budget and pay for the teacher's room renovation expenses out of the 1% fund. That motion was eventually reduced to $200,000 with board approval. At that time, the fund had a balance of $467,000. I'll repeat, the 1% fund had a balance of $467,000, according to statements made during the meeting and in subsequent Danbury News Times article. Again, that was for the teacher's room alone. Later on, during the same, very same meeting, the board also authorized an additional $91,000 expenditure to be taken out of the 1% fund for seven additional district improvements. Replacement of windows at the wall in the cafeteria, upgrade exterior lighting, replace interior vestibule doors, this was at Chapag, add variable frequency drive motors, district-wide Primus security lock cylinders, water cannon, field irrigation, ground care utility vehicle. So that was $91,000, and that was also approved by the board. Even though they knew full well we were facing the potential of having to bond for the ag science, on March 5, 2018, then board members approved the transfer of $47,350 out of the 1% Capital Reserve for seven district-wide improvements. out of the 1% capital reserve for seven district-wide improvements. Water tank valves and pump upgrade, 10,000. Chapag Valley School. Upgrade paging clock bell system. Chapag. LED lighting for the pool, Chapag. Boothrey School, update paging clocks and bell system. Burnham School, same, paging clocks and bell system. Washington Primary, same, update paging clocks and bell system. District-wide add emergency light and horn strobe at the C.O. 47,350 that was approved. In 2019, excuse me. And on March 5th, 2018, then board members approved the transfer. Okay, on March 27, 2017, then more board members approved 361,000 for six SVS of replacements and improvements. Got the list for that. These are all for Chapag. 10,000 gallon water tank replacement, replace pool roof, top heating unit, uh, carpet extractor and wall behind the smart back, convert cafeteria to LED, replace outdated doors and hardware. So you get the idea. Um, I know that I've presented a myriad of, um, of numbers, but essentially 699,350 has been removed from the 1% over the past five years, all the while facing upcoming bonding and bands for 15.25 million. In 2019, uh, the, there was 730,000 in the 1% capital reserve fund. The district received a double A-plus bond rating and 8.25 million was subsequently bonded over 20 years. This past Wednesday, with 1,390,000 in the 1% fund, we again received a double A-plus bond rating. We were able to short-term ban 7 million with the lowest bid being 0.26%, as Alice said, uh, a quarter of a point interest. And there were five bids total. While awaiting bid closure and award, I had the opportunity to ask questions of Barry Bernaby, Bernaby, Managing Director of Phoenix Advisors, the company which oversees our band and bond sales. I specifically asked Barry if the amount of money that a school district has in the capital reserve has an effect on their bond ratings. He replied that it is not so much the financial health of the school di- district that influences bond ratings, but rather the fiscal and financial health of each of the individual, individual towns that make up the region, the regional district. At this point, I would still like to make a motion to remove 450,000 from the 2021-2022 proposed budget and pay for the three replacement and re-provements out of the capital reserve instead of from taxpayer revenues.
Checking.
Mister, uh, Mister Chairman, could I just make a point of order? We have a, a, a motion on the table. Can we entertain yet another motion when that's still on the table?
Greg, you're muted.
Um, I, I, we've done this many times. We always treat this as a motion to amend the budget. So it's really a motion to amend it uh, for purposes of removing those funds. It's not a separate motion to, to approve a budget that's the number amount less. It's just a motion to amend. So I think it's in order.
Greg.
Discussion, Jim.
Yes, so on the motion. There's no dispute that the Board of Education over the years has spent money out of the 1% fund for all kinds of things. For John to list them off, I mean, and nobody's questioning that. The issue is, does that action years ago, back to 2016 and forward, bind us tonight? Bind the Board of Ed tonight, a past action? I don't believe it does. We're evaluating the circumstances then. I'm sure I voted in favor of it to take it out of the 1% fund in those years. That doesn't mean that we are bound to do it tonight or that we have to or that we think it's in the best interest of the district. We've evaluated it. We've heard the advice of our financial person. Everybody can vote. The motion's been made again, but I just don't think that a history of the use of the 1% fund is illustrative of our responsibility tonight.
Yeah, Greg?
Yeah, go ahead.
What does bind us?
Our judgment under present circumstances. That's what you do. You give your best judgment under the circumstances. Listen and you decide.
Jim, my comments reference the fact that we bonded almost $700,000 known
John, I heard your argument. I heard it.
We were going to bond. We bought, we took that money.
I heard it twice, John. I heard it twice.
It was about the health of the fund. Right.
Um, I just have to say, I agree with Jim and we spent about 20 to 30 minutes on this last week and the board voted down the same, um, amend, amendment that, that he has proposed. And I think the board has supported this budget. I think we support Nicole's advice, her professional advice. And just because we've done something in the past, doesn't mean we need to continue doing it into the future. Things have changed and I, I really think that we have a different, um, we have a different superintendent today. We have a d- different. Um, um, we have, we have Nicole. So I think it's unfair to keep looking back and repeating what we did in the past because we did it. So I would like to move on because we've already discussed this at great length last meeting and voted it down.
Greg, if I may just briefly, I'm not, I'm not saying that we would never use the 1% fund again. I'm sure we will for many capital projects. I'm just saying with regard to this issue, at this time, this is what's before the board to decide.
Okay, uh, Megan, will you raise your hand?
Yes, I was. And I, I appreciate the history and I think, John, you know, we are operating so much differently. We operate leaner. We operate in a form of transparency, which also means that we make certain that we are not, um, in the ru- in the space right now where we have extra dollars. We certainly want to make certain that as we're able to budget and we budget appropriately, that we do have something that in the event an emergency comes up, we have that. And I also want to share because being on the call with Barry as well, Barry went on to say that having that money does help us. So he did talk about the importance of the fiscal, um, health of our towns, but he also talked about the importance of having the money that we have in our savings. So I just wanted to make sure and I clarified that.
All right, Jennifer and then Mary.
I just want to, um, obviously reiterate the same statement that I made last week was that I'm in full support of the budget and the work that Nicole has done. I also just want to note that we have the First Selectmen of Washington here tonight supporting the budget that's being presented. And I'm also assuming by the lack of, um, uh, presence of the First Selectmen of Roxbury and Bridgewater tells me that they don't have an issue with this budget. If they did, they would use this as an opportunity to discuss that. So I just think that with the support of all three selectmen, we need to move forward with the budget that has been presented. Enough.
Yeah, John?
Ho- hold on a second, Pete. I think I, Mary's next and then you.
Okay.
I, I, I have to say, I am, I'm definitely not in favor of raiding the capital non-recurring account for 45% of it. I mean, that's, that's a lot no matter what. If they really didn't think we could afford it, then maybe we should take everything but the fire alarms for Chapag out of the budget. Um, but I'm not for taking it out of the capital non-recurring account. I think that the budget is wonderful as it is. I think Nicole and Megan have done a wonderful job and we should all support it because it, it's good.
All right, Pete?
Well, I mean, I, I don't disagree with John, but I just, my theology is if you don't see the support or the numbers there for your position, um, although you can make the statement, if you can't find support for it, you really want to go ahead with it.
Okay. Other comments? Someone, anyone else? Don't hear anything else. I don't see anyone waving at me. So we'll, we'll go to a vote. Um, it moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to amend the budget presented by the superintendent in order to approve?
I was gonna say, don't you think you should take the roll?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna take a roll. Um, but, but I want, the, the motion is to, uh, to, to remove, what, what's the amount, Sue?
450,000.
450,000 from the superintendent's budget to move it to the 1% fund to cover the cost of the Burnham roof. Um, okay, Sue, could you please call the roll?
Sure. Joe?
Nay.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Nay.
Alex?
Nay.
Justin?
Nay.
Jen?
Nay.
Lisa?
No.
Mike?
Nay.
Julie?
Nay.
Pete?
Oh, yes.
Mary?
Nay.
Greg?
Uh, nay.
Motion fails. Two to 10.
Okay. All right, we're back to the budget as, uh, as originally was presented. Do we have any further comments about it?
No.
All right, um.
It seems to be, Greg?
Yeah.
Seems to be supported by the political environment, which is a key for the Board of Ed. When you don't hear anything coming from the political environment, uh, seems to me the board is in a good position.
If I may?
Yes, Jim.
Peter? It's not that, it's not that we didn't hear anything. We heard something loud and clear from our first selectman, quite frankly. And that counts. I agree.
Yeah, I, I think Megan, you've gotten good reports back when you met with the other, with the other Board Selectmen, so.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, I, I think there's support for this. And, uh, frankly, you know, to be perfectly honest, whenever we get a budget where the, where the, um, I think John pointed this out, where, where, where we have salaries that are going up. If you, if you look at the amount and, and take the percentage of the budget that's, that's salaries and benefits, and if you look at that amount and that's going up 2% or 3%, uh, and your budget's only going up 1.64, then that should tell you something. It should tell you that essentially this budget is, is making, is, is cutting money out of various areas. Fortunately, they've been able to do it without, um, without damaging program. And the program is not being diminished, but there were some monies that they were, savings they were able to achieve. And as a result, we've got a pretty good 1.64% increase budget in the year when our salaries would have accounted, shouldn't have counted if we were a flat budget for probably 2% or 3% increase. So, um, at this point, if there are no further comments, um, Sue, could you please, uh, take the roll?
Okay.
This is to approve the budget as presented by the superintendent.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
No.
Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Uh, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion passes 11 to 1.
Okay. Um, now, uh, the next item on the agenda is I'll look for a motion to set the annual district meeting date for May 3, 2021 and possible referendum date for May 4, 2021.
So.
Julie.
All right, we're gonna take Julie as the mover and Jim as the seconder.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Uh, discussion. All right. I believe the way this works, as we do it every year, is we actually have that district meeting on Monday and then we adjourn to a, um, basically a vote in person on the, on Tuesday. So that's the way.
Referendum.
Yeah, referendum. We adjourn to a referendum. Um, all right, good. Uh, so if there's no further comment, uh, let's take the roll on that as well, Sue.
Hey, Joe?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 12 to nothing.
All right, well, at this point, uh, that's all we have on the agenda. So this meeting is adjourned and we will now, um, at 7:45 and we will now move on to the, uh, Board of Education, uh, regular meeting, um, of March 29, 2021. And, uh, we just had a unanimous vote. Can we dispense with the taking of attendance? I think we've got everybody still here and haven't seen anyone disappear from the screen. Um, okay, so we'll move to public comment on agenda items. Is there any public comment on the agenda items for this meeting? See no one waving or talking?
Um, at, at this point, Greg, I do know that I have had somebody from the public who was looking to speak. Um, so I didn't know if Jane Dawn was on here.
Um, well, if there.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I am. I wasn't sure when we were going to be allowed to speak and so.
Now's your time.
Okay, so it, it would be okay to go forward now?
Please.
Okay, um, let me, uh, I'm, my name is Janie Dawn. I'm from Woodbury, formerly many 28 years in Roxbury. I work with Little Britches, uh, the therapeutic horse riding farm in Roxbury. I would like to introduce our board chairman, Janie Larson from, um, and have her speak to introduce why we're here tonight. Janie?
Hi, everyone. Um, I don't know, can you see me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Hi, well, thank you very much for having us. I really, really appreciate it. I'm the, um, board of, uh, president of the Board of Directors for Little Britches. And, uh, Alice Daly and myself, um, would like to address the board regarding the pilot program between Little Britches Therapeutic Riding and Chapag Agroscience Academy. Um, Little Britches is starting its 42nd year. Our mission is to improve the lives of individuals with disabilities using the movement of the horse. We serve a diverse, um, population, including but not limited to individuals with autism, cerebral palsy, processing delays, sensory integration, anxiety and ADHD and ADD. Our riders come from 29 of the surrounding towns. And our program is a PATH International affiliated center. I could give you many examples of the excess, success of our program on both our students and their families. But I'm here to tell you about how we have worked already with Principal Gallo and Dr. Hermans to explore how we can seamlessly integrate our program with the ECOIN program at Chapag. So I'm going to now turn it over to Alice Daly, our executive director.
Hi, I'm Alice Daly, the executive director. I'm also an instructor. Um, initially, the pilot program was going to be an eight-week program starting in March. Um, due to COVID restrictions, we changed it to a four-week program for the month of April. Uh, Dr. Hermans and I viewed the program as a partnership between Chapag Agroscience Academy and Little Britches. We did not think the program fell under the public use guidelines. We understand per the policy, the facility is not open until April 19th. We are here to ask you to consider making an exception to the, for the pilot program in allowing us to start on April 5th. Um, this opportunity will give Chapag students, um, an SAE, uh, opportunity on campus. There are eight students from Chapag that have already completed volunteer training. Um, students can help Little Britches implement therapy by serving as horse leaders, sidewalkers, helping take temperature um, of the staff and rider and volunteers. From an academic perspective, students will gain knowledge about and have exposure to their peers with disabilities. They will learn about the benefits and science behind therapeutic riding and its application to different abilities. And they will increase their horse experience. We ran the program during COVID last summer and fall. We followed strict protocols. Our students are vulnerable and we have to be very careful.
Put into the superintendent's salary.
Um, we ran the program, I'm sorry, the four-year pilot will allow Little Britches.
Four weeks, four weeks. The four-week.
Before we, sorry, the four-week pilot will allow Little Britches to get an idea of the manpower needed and the overall logistics of operating at Chapag. The agroscience program will have a realistic idea of what is involved in having Little Britches operate at your facility. Um, if there's any more information, please let me know if you need any more information and I hope you will consider granting us an exception. Thank you.
Greg?
Jim?
Can I hear the superintendent's position on this? I'm sure you know all about it. I, I'm familiar with Little Britches. My daughter was involved years ago. Um, it's a wonderful program, Megan. Um, it's a wonderful program, Megan. I'd like to hear you.
I I appreciate that, Jim. Um, quite frankly, we are welcoming this partnership. Um, we have held very strict to the uh, no outside use um, regarding the use of our facilities. And so uh, when Jane had contacted me and we talked about the fact that right now this has been our our board stance as far as not letting people utilize our facilities in order to make certain that we were preserving the education and in-person learning. Um, obviously, we knew that we were hitting some very rocky roads during the COVID uh, process. Um, I do have to say, I think that um, what the program can offer us, the strict protocols that we can follow with this, it is something that I I do support. However, I also recognize that with as a board, it is a rocky road. Um, we we open up Pandora's Box a little bit. Um, as we've had to say no to some of our parking wrecks, um, when they wanted to utilize our gyms, et cetera, so um, recognizing that, but I do believe that we can control for and provide a safe learning environment um, while allowing Little Britches to utilize our facility.
So you've got this all planned out, if this is approved?
Uh, they have provided their COVID plan for us. Uh, they have been.
But you've got supervision. I mean, it's all worked out. You're confident it'll be worked out the month of April.
And I'm going to say too, with the help of Dr. Hermans and Kim Gallo, they have absolutely made certain that things are regulated down to making certain that the horses are um, getting acclimated into our riding areas. Yes.
Uh, not just the horses, the kids. I mean, everybody's well set.
I'm gonna tell you, I have learned nothing, but horses are more temperamental than children, so.
That is true, but it's a good question, Jim.
So um, we know that this is gonna be a topic that we bring up when we talk uh, later on for the action. So Greg, however, you feel most comfortable, we can leave it to where it is on the agenda, or if you feel it's appropriate to move it up. Either way, um, it is on the agenda regarding uh, the April nineteenth, so this would be uh, that part of the consideration and also an exception, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I, is there a financial cost to the district to the region?
No.
Okay. Megan, is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone object to moving the action item up to the present time? Where it is on the agenda?
I just ask a quick question.
Sure.
Um, at any given time when there's a lesson going on, how many um, riders and or instructors and or Chapag students would be kind of gathered together?
So um, we have three riders will be in the ring maximum at a time. Um, they are staggered, so they can run fifteen minutes apart. Um, the maximum number of riders, I mean of of team around that rider would be three. Some have less, but it would be a maximum of three, which each team. So maximum in the ring would be nine. We may have a couple of students that man the front uh, sort of where the people come in so that they can take temperatures and and we don't have people coming into the facility um, just the riders, so they'll meet the riders and and bring them in, and we won't have spectators in that in the ring or in even in the building.
Greg?
All appropriately left.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just have a question. These are small children, correct?
Um, most of them, it's it's anywhere from probably the age of seven, uh, maybe a couple younger to I think there's a couple in their early twenties.
Okay, the only question I have is the size of the horse relevant to the size of the rider? Um, or the person, the person's going to interacting with the horse. Uh, is the size of a horse concerned to you relevant to the size of the?
Peter, they're beating their own horses. They, right? Am I correct, I assume?
Our own horses, yes. We'll ship them in.
Oh, you have, okay.
Ship our own horses into use, yes.
Okay, that's, I mean, I have no problem with using our horses. It's just a relationship between.
Okay, I think they're all pretty big. Okay, um, does anyone object to moving the action item up to this present time while we're talking about this and thinking about it?
No.
I don't hear any objections, so we're gonna move that action item up after we, you know, and so we're we're discuss, we'll we'll discuss a little bit more if we, if anyone has any further questions or I I understand, if I might ask a question, that that what you are proposing is this this program has direct educational opportunities for our ag science students. Am I correct about that?
Yes, that is a correct statement.
So this is really programmatic, unlike most of the other uses that we might have by outside groups. This one is actually geared to our program. It's actually providing us a need within the educational program we're trying to deliver.
And it's an excellent, if I may, it's an excellent use of our facility, our brand new facility.
No, agreed, agreed with that, but it also sounds like it's more than just a typical outside use. It's actually integrated with our educational program. And so I think if we were going to do this, uh, and we were going to make an exception to the rule about April nineteenth, this is exactly, if not this, what else would you, what else, what would you make an exception for? Is my question. Anyone else?
Uh, Alice, um, I'm sorry, this is Jane Dawn again. Alice, could you explain that credential that the ag students would be able to achieve with this program?
Um, so they all have student agricultural experience, and again, Dr. Herman, if she's here, can hop in. But I do believe they have a certain amount of hours they have to uh, meet per state requirement, and by volunteering for our program, uh, they they get hours for any time they volunteer for the program. So they even from that helps them meet that requirement in addition to just gaining knowledge um, of horses and and dealing with uh, individuals with disabilities.
So our children for the Agroscience Program have supervised agroscience um, experience that they have to do, and there's a certain amount of hours. They can do it in whatever um, internship they would like, and so obviously this is a nice partnership, but um, not necessarily exclusive, but certainly I I endorse and highly endorse our children having this experience and getting the hours through this opportunity.
Greg?
Yes.
I don't, I'm sorry, I don't have a an agenda in front of me, but if the item is removed, I knew that the item be approved subject to the supervision of the superintendent and the principal.
Uh, can I ask you to add one other thing on that, and also, and subject to the observation of all appropriate protocols situated by or or determined by Region Twelve?
Yep.
Which I know they'd want to do anyway, but.
So, agreed.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Jen. Is there a further discussion? All right, do you want to take a roll call?
Okay, I just had to unmute myself.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Justin.
Aye.
Jen.
Aye.
Lisa.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Pete.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously twelve to nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much.
And for bringing this program to us.
Yes.
Well, we're thrilled to be here. Let me tell you that, and we're just thrilled for this vote tonight. So thank you all for your support. We we are just so grateful, and we are so looking forward to this partnership, so.
Well, we feel the same way. We're thrilled to have you.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Okay. All right, um, anyone, any other member of the public have a comment on the agenda tonight? Don't hear anything. So we'll move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are minutes of the special meeting of March eighth, Board of Education meeting of March eighth, and the special meeting of March twenty-second. Does anyone wish to take any of the consent agenda items off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, those minutes will be adopted. Uh, Megan, update on COVID nineteen?
All right, um, well, I'm going to present as we always do, um, so this way everyone can see uh, where we stand today, and I apologize, it turns out I started at the end. Um, so taking a look and seeing, oh, gosh, pause that. Um, I our update to date, again, as we calculate our running total from the start of our school year. Um, and you will see, we have had an uptick in COVID positive cases. I'm certain you saw as I forward every email when we share that it is a COVID positive case. Um, we've been sending a number of emails recently. Um, with that said, I can tell you as we've quarantined uh, students based on infection rates, we have not seen we've not seen a a spread that has occurred within our schools. So we are not seeing people turn up positive uh, when they've been put in quarantine, if their contact is just within the school building. But certainly, we are watching. Um, it is notable to to share that um, when you look at how many actual positive cases of COVID we have had in our schools, um, as you can tell, it's it's about forty-nine cases. So things that we need to know, um, this past week, the governor has changed some of the travel guidance in which um, it it has less restrictions when coming back to Connecticut. However, the CDC guideline still um, does have that best practice is to be tested before returning um, to school and into a regular work life to make certain that you're watching for any signs and symptoms. So we are still asking those who are traveling outside of the state for more than twenty-four hours that they either access a rapid or PCR test uh, before returning to school. Again, we we understand that um, people may be taking advantage of uh, these reduced restrictions. However, we don't want to compromise the safety of our schools. So we are asking that a way to show that everybody is safe is to certainly um, get tested and then come into school so we are uh, can operate um, safely. Additionally, um, this Wednesday, March thirty-first, we will have a uh, remote learning day. Uh, there will be no in-person learning, and the reason is we do have a large-scale staff vaccination that is happening on Tuesday. This is part of our closed clinic, and um, we know that with that second uh, vaccination, people do um, have some symptoms that may arise. Uh, fatigue is one of the the biggest ones that we are seeing. So recognizing that our educators may need some recovery time, we will be having uh, a virtual learning day this Wednesday. Um, it is also important to note that the new COVID variant strands um, have been identified within our local area. Um, we know that it is not about being sicker, however, it is that they are more contagious. So we still are holding to the six feet of distance and our protocols that we've utilized. Um, there have been recent studies that have shared that there is no statistical uh, difference between being three feet apart or being six feet apart within a school building. However, we are not looking to increase the amount of people who need to quarantine, and quarantine guidelines still say within that six-foot radius. So we are still keeping the that six feet of distance. We are um, certainly making certain that we're holding true to our protocols uh, knowing that the more contagious strand is local at this time. It is also important to note that the REACH program will resume on um, Monday. There was a COVID exposure within the REACH program, and inasmuch as I'm sharing with everybody, we designed for six feet apart. Trying to keep three- and four-year-olds six feet apart is near impossible. Um, so we recognize that um, when doing the contact tracing, we we needed to move that program um, and and we we look forward to resuming it on April fifth. Um, and really, it should have been April second, but as we know, that is Good Friday. There's no school, so it did uh, changed our restart date to the fifth. Um, also important to note that beginning on April first, uh, COVID vaccines will be available to anyone sixteen and older. Um, Jim Brinton is working with the Washington schools, um, and that includes all of Region Twelve, not just Washington. Um, regarding uh, getting us together, seeing what are the plans, uh, you know, i- if there's anything that is happening within our students. Again, for us, our entire uh, process behind this has been to make certain it's available. There is not a mandate that is involved with that at this time, but we certainly want to make certain that if people want to avail themselves to the vaccines, we certainly make certain they are able to do such that. So um, that is my COVID update, and I will entertain any questions.
All right. Well, Megan, it looks like um, the percentage of infections nationwide is about eleven percent of the population. And these, those are known infections. In Connecticut, it's about ten percent, and Region Twelve looks like it's around six.
Yep, I was gonna say five, but yes, it is.
Five, six, somewhere between five and six. I didn't have the, couldn't figure out the exact number, but uh, so I think all things considered, that's a, that's a very good uh, uh, result, but it it does warn us that this thing is dangerous, and we need to remain vigilant.
Thank you.
Megan, can I ask one question?
Yes, please.
Have you considered um, doing a limited amount of testing of students and staff?
Um, we had talked about the Bi-Nex testing and um, seeing if that was something that we would do here with in the schools. Um, as we explored it, it it came out to be more problematic than we would be able to absorb here. Um, so it, we've explored that option. I I can't say that my explorations has been successful. Um, so so no, not at this time.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Megan. We'll uh, move on to uh, a video, Chapag Athletics video. Ben.
And Ben, as you're keying it up, I have to say um, just his ability to capture a winter season that um, many of us could not experience in person. And to capture the the adrenaline rush, the excitement that was happening in every field of sport that we had. Um, Ben, I think you did an exceptional job, and I I'm very glad you are going to be able to showcase your work here tonight. So without further ado, the talents of Ben Allen.
That was awesome. Can I just say something really quick?
You may.
Just uh, just to piggyback, first of all, all the sports are just so amazing, and I love watching that video, but I just need to give a shout out to the girls' basketball team for their big win on Friday. team for their big win on Friday night, coming, I think, third, uh, overall, which is so awesome. And then the boys' Friday night game, then they, they fought so hard to win and they, they just made it and I just, I couldn't just be more proud of all of them for working so hard and it's been a pleasure to be able to watch them on YouTube, even though I much prefer cheer them on in person. So I just wanted to just give a shout out to them, so.
No, thank you, Jen. Thank you. Absolutely outstanding, um, video, Ben. I think that really, really brought it home to us how much we miss those sports in person. So, yes, Alex.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Megan to continue to send out those links, uh, cause, uh, they're, they're fun to watch, uh, whether it's the, uh, singing in front of the school with the birds or the athletic things, they're, they're, they're all quite interesting. So please keep those links coming.
Happy to do so. Happy to.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to reports. It's getting late. I don't have a whole lot, uh, for you tonight, but, um, you, you, you've seen our kids perform. You've seen despite the most, uh, difficult situation that we could, anyone could have imagined, uh, we, we continue to have athletic contests. We continue to have music. We continue to have the arts. We continue to have our classes. And I would point out that, uh, except for a brief period of time that we were out of, um, out of school for, for, for a, um, quarantine, um, we have been in-person instruction since August 31st and that's hundred, more than a hundred days, well, more than a hundred days. And I think it's a testimony, uh, testament to our students, our staff, our, our parents, our communities that we can do this. And I just want to again, say how proud I am of them and how proud I am of all of you here on the board. Uh, you folks have been attending virtually, uh, everyone here every night, uh, for these meetings. I know they're hard. I know it's getting awful to be on this, the screen and, and conducting it again, but, um, I think you've done a marvelous job in leading the community and trying to get things through and especially looking forward to our budget, uh, passing and I think with your help and, uh, that, 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 that will happen. Um, but in any event, um, I guess we'll move on to, uh, superintendent's report.
Um, well, well, thank you and Greg, I can't ever say it better than you do when it comes down to the amount of people it has taken to make this school year happen and the opportunities that have been provided by our students. It is not one entity. It is everyone together, pulling together to make amazing things happen. And, um, and Jen, you stole a little bit of my thunder with the updates. No, it should be said multiple times. It should be said multiple times. They did amazing. So I just want to give you a little bit of the sports update because I do think it needs to be, uh, highlighted because our, our students didn't always have an audience this year. So, uh, the winter season did conclude on March 27th. Uh, the swim team participated in the Berkshire League Swim Championship. This was done virtually. So please know our swimmers weren't able to compete against somebody next to them. They were logging in their time. So they really were pushing themselves for their own time, investing themselves because you didn't always know the results. You weren't chasing down the person in the lane next to you. And kudos to our swimmers who just, they did some outstanding and I'm going to highlight some of our, um, some of our, uh, records that we get to praise. Um, but with that said, our boys and girls basketball team, I think if you have ever had your emotions played with, your heartstrings, there were buzzer beaters. There were buzzer beaters on the other teams that got us. It was emotional. Um, but I, we have to say that, um, our boys' basketball team did play for the Bor- Berkshire League Championship Game and unfortunately lost to Thomason. Um, but it was, they bested Litchfield, so it was our turn as it goes back and forth. Um, but at the same time, our girls' basketball team did beat Northwestern, uh, 38 to 28 in the final round and it gave them their third place finish. So kudos to our young ladies. Um, as you know, Owen Hibbert broke the, uh, Chappagh all-time scoring record, um, but he was also selected the Berkshire League Coaches, um, winner of the Leon Varento Sportsmanship Award winner. And this is given annually to the top senior boys' basketball player for sportsmanship in the Berkshire League. So all around a wonderful year. Um, we are also proud our cheerleaders where we didn't know they, they weren't able to stunt early on. There were all kinds of restrictions on our cheerleaders and yet they were able to give the majority of their performances virtually, but as we were ending the season, we found opportunities for them to join in. We created senior nights where our cheerleaders brought the energy into the room, um, and also had an opportunity to perform at, um, our tournament games. So thank you to our cheerleaders on a disjointed season, but you made it all come together. Um, indoor track team also competed virtually in competitions. Uh, they were not able to hold the regional competitions due to potential spread of COVID. Um, but they did work with their coaches. They posted their scores so that way the, uh, the members of the team could measure their performances. So again, making certain that we continue to be competitors in whatever form and fashion that we're able to. Um, so I do want to, uh, recognize some of our student athletes who've received recognition for their performances this winter. So in swimming, Jessica Kissling, Ava, um, Adelletti, Faith Bargalini and, um, Emma Perone. In the 200 medley relay, they are Berkshire League Champions and Berkshire League All-Stars. Uh, their performance set a new Chappagh record, so kudos. Uh, Jessica Kissling, Ava Adelletti, Faith Bargaloni and Emma Perone, um, really did make certain that as they were not just in the medley, but also in the free relay, also are Berkshire League Champions and Berkshire League All-Stars. Um, congratulations to Faith Bargalini with the 100-fly Berkshire League Champion and Berkshire League All-Star. Ava Adelletti with the 100-breaststroke Berkshire League Champion and Berkshire League All-Star. And, um, I always mess this up and I'm going to apologize. Um, so, um, Mr. Colangelo, I always mess up his first name. Say it for me, Kim. Giacomo, right? Giacomo, okay. I want to make certain he deserves, he deserves the praise and like him doing his flip and his spin in the video, but Giacomo Colangelo, he, um, did new Chappagh six dive and 11 dive record. So congratulations to our swimmers. We also have to congratulate Brooke Donahue, our first-team Berkshire League All-Star. Um, Brooke also with one of her, um, basketball, um, colleagues were the ones who came to me and appealed to get senior parents to come and really advocated and spoke to how we could do safety measures. So not only are we looking at champions, we are looking at kids who want the community as part of this experience and just great advocacy. Um, and as we know, we have Owen Hibbert and Michael Paracci who made the first-team Berkshire League All-Stars. Congratulations to our winter sports. And we've literally had about enough sat time to catch our breath because, um, baseball and our spring season starts almost immediately. Um, our baseball games will start on April 10th. Um, due to some safety, uh, protocols we need to do in order to make certain that we are reducing potential spread for COVID, we are asking that the general public does not attend home games. We are going to make certain that we allow the two adults per player. We are going to have a, um, and thank you so much to Jim Brinton and, uh, Kevin Smith and Matt Paracci and, um, Donna Larry, who are creating the area that we know will be controlled for our parents. Um, but we also know it's public grounds and it may be harder to control for some of those things. We are also inviting, we have some honorary members who they have been going to our baseball games for about 50 years. They will be given special passes in order to attend as well. We want to honor those who have supported us through the years, but it is one where it is not just going to be as open as it has been in the past. So we.
I assume they're vaccinated.
Well played, well played. Um, but it is one that we recognize it, it is a little bit of a challenge. And, and Jen, I see your hand up, so I'm going to pause my update. Go ahead.
I just want to just, um, we can talk about it another time, but I do think it's something to revisit in terms of having, um, being at a public place that's not on school grounds to allow some of the community members to come and watch the game. I think there's plenty of room to be able to create some social distancing and allowing some of our community members to come watch the game since it is outside and there's plenty of space.
I hear what you're saying and there's the safety of what we control. Um, it is harder this year. Our kids can't use the dugout. So there's other things that we know that as it spreads wider, it is one that we just ask that people are respectful. We know what we're going to be able to police and we know what we're not going to be able to.
I mean, I think, I think that limited space is one thing in a dugout. I think when you have a larger space to play with, I think it would be, and, um, I think it just would be as, especially as people are getting vaccinated and we do have the space to be able to allow there to be an opportunity for community members to come. So I, I am going to push for that, just to let you know.
I, I, we might butt heads, but we will respectfully do such. We're good. Um, so, and it is one, again, we also know there's the ebb and flow of, of how things are going to translate. My priority will always be is that it is the parents and the students that we are, want to make certain have that season. And one of my fears is when we open those things up, it introduces potential spread and I would never want to cut a season short, but I hear what you're saying. We'll certainly, we will certainly have colorful conversations. I'm sorry. Um, so going forward, I also want to say, cause it's not all sports all the time, um, our drama production of Edges will showcase on April 30th as well as May 1st and May 2nd. Applause to Ben Allen and Beth Harverson, um, for their creative Hollywood-style twist on the drama production this year. So, uh, we're getting some recordings that are happening. We're getting some movie, um, scenes that are happening, but overall, uh, again, trying to find ways that, uh, we can still showcase our students' talents in safe ways. So, um, more to come on that, but I want to make certain everybody's marking their calendars. Um, I also want to celebrate our elementary schools and their efforts for the Read Across America. Um, they have done reading competitions, incentives and just a whole lot of pushing for some fantastic reading that has happened at our elementary schools. Um, and I think, you know, whether it's been tied to a fundraiser or just counting the number of books, showcasing the, the amount of books, it really has been a celebration of learning. Um, I want to update the board. Um, we are excited that New Milford has increased their agri-science seats this year. So, uh, we currently have 48 acceptances for our, um, class of 21, 22 freshman cohort. Um, and now New Milford is offering six additional seats for next year. So this is a wonderful, um, way that we are now taking kids off the waitlist. They will be able to join us and, um, we certainly welcome them with open arms. Um, additionally, the other thing I am hyper proud of right now is our staff and the efforts and people around us recognizing the importance of education in Region 12. I am proud to share that currently, and when I say currently, I did this on Saturday. I've still gotten some applications since Saturday. We had 127 applications for students who are not residents of Roxbury, Bridgewater and Washington to come to Region 12 schools. And I think that is a testament to the educators in this district and what they've done and what you've allowed to happen and the opportunities that have happened and, and it's just, it, I can't think of better praise than people wanting to be here. So it is with, with very, very proud moment right here.
Nicole, question, uh, I mean, sorry, Megan, of the 127, how many are agri-science? How many are just regular school?
Only 30 of them are agri-science.
Really? So 97 kids want to come to Chappagh?
And I'm going to say the words "and counting."
Congratulations.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that Chappagh or is that the region, the elementary schools as well?
Entire region. That is our entire region. However, um, we are seeing this, the, the biggest uptick right now is, uh, Chappagh. Um, we have a large amount of sixth graders and ninth graders seeking to attend Chappagh.
And how many are Sherman, Megan?
Um, from that, I do not have Sherman within that count.
Oh, okay.
Um, so the other thing that I do want to publicly acknowledge and thank, and Alex, you did a great job at our last meeting, but I wanted to make certain, I said it again, um, Greg had mentioned the 1% and us, uh, advocating to move to the 2% at the legislature. And a special thank you to Greg Kava and Nicole Grant who spoke on behalf of the need for regional school districts to have the same opportunities as municipalities do with having a 2% fund and not just a 1%. So thank you both for your advocacy, um, in the government level. And the last thing I just want to remind everyone of is that our April break is the week of April 12th. So, um, that will be a week off for students and, uh, we look forward to having everyone return on the 19th. The 19th is also the time in which a lot of the, um, executive orders from the governor will sunset. So very curious on what's going to happen with the ability to hold virtual meetings, um, and certainly some of those mandates that are out there. So it seems to coincide with our return to school, so we will certainly be watching those things closely. Um, and then just for some personnel updates, um, we have appointed, uh, Justin Plants as the JV Boys Basketball Coach and I have the, um, opportunity to share the retirement of Dave McRoberts. And if anybody does not know Dave, he is one who meticulously hangs things perfectly for you when you want your pictures put out, but not only just that, as far as his maintenance work, um, certainly keeping not just our pool running for all of these years, but also taking care of our plumbing needs and really being able to, um, help support in so many of our maintenance needs. So we wish him well on his retirement, but his retirement is effective on Wednesday and we wish him well as he moves forward. So with that, Greg, that concludes my updates this evening.
Hey, very good.
Greg?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question for Megan. Megan, uh, forgetting about the economic cost or staff or anything, just as an issue of physical plant, does, do you have the physical room to fit 106 students?
No, I don't.
No?
No, I don't. Um, there's the ideal where if they were all spread out in grade levels, um, that what we certainly do and, um, our process is that, uh, priority always goes to our, our students within the district and then we see what are the seats that we have available to offer out to students in, um, surrounding areas who are seeking tuition in. But I can say to you right now, we do not have the capacity based on, um, some of the demands that's out there. Enrollment and acceptance into tuition in is very much based on what we have.
No, I understand and you were under the restriction that any new people that you take in, you can't increase staff and I'm asking you to forget about that. I'm just asking about physical plant. Is that the same for the students who are applying for Chappagh? Just Chappagh?
Chappagh would be easier to, um, absorb a little bit as far as spacing goes, um, but we, we don't have the physical plants at the elementary to, to add on to different classrooms, et cetera.
Thank you.
Wow, that's interesting because when we, when I first came to the town, we used to have two classes of each grade at the, at the, uh, Washington primary and Booth had two classes of both of the grades.
Yep.
I presume that the introduction of, of, of REACH, um, to the school has, has made Washington a little bit tight.
Yep.
But, uh, I do, good Lord, at the, at this point in time, I don't know how we would have accommodated the students we had 25 years ago.
I, I agree and I think that you're absolutely right. When we've captured some of these opportunities, uh, REACH is three classrooms. Um, you know, there, there are certainly things that, uh, become a little bit more prohibitive. Um, and it's one in which it's wonderful to have, uh, the demand, but we also want to make certain that we are never compromising the education that we are giving to the residents of Region 12.
I, I don't know however we, when I moved here, there were 1,180 kids in the school district. I don't know how we did it now that we're 700 and we can't fit anymore.
Again, if it's the balance that we have and if everybody would be very good about how old they are, if they're willing to let me fudge their grade levels, I can make a lot of things happen, but, um, it doesn't, it doesn't always come nice and le- neatly.
Well, how badly do they want to attend? Okay, very good. Uh, we, we'll move on to the treasurer's report, John.
Yeah, just a couple of words on what happened last Wednesday. We had a $7 million band sale, uh, with a bid of 0.26%. That's like a little bit more than a Uh, with a bid of point two-six percent. That's like a little bit more than a quarter of a percent interest. And, um, the actual cost of that seven million dollar ban, it's only for seven months. Will be, um, eleven thousand dollars. So we borrowed seven million for a total cost of eleven thousand. We did budget a hundred and forty thousand, but, uh, there will be a ban, the one three million dollar ban. That's for the, uh, the boiler, the rooftop coat, perimeter heating, windows and the maintenance garage at Chappag, at Chappag that came under the referendum. Uh, that will be rolled into, hopefully rolled depending on, I guess, the rates or, um, or whether or not the bond will sell in November. Uh, that will be rolled into a permanent bond. And, um, whether or not the state reimburses us, the other four million dollar ban may be, uh. Rolled over into a new ban, uh, depending on, on the circumstances in November. But again, um. I'd like to borrow seven million for, for, for eleven thousand. That's it.
Thank you, John. Um, we'll go on to committee reports. Cave, Mary?
Uh, yes, um, there is another opportunity for us to speak about, um, how we feel about. Uh, the two raising the one percent capital non-recurring account to two percent. And that is under a webinar that they're having for Cave. It's called Let Your Voice Be Heard. And the Education Committee is, uh, that webinar is on Tuesday, April 6th. From eleven AM to twelve fifteen PM. And that's when we could speak again about, um, moving from the one percent to the two percent. To anybody that's around that may want to do that. There you go. There's also another date of, um. April twenty-sixth, that the same hour is eleven to, uh, ten fifteen. That's for the appropriations budget. And then at the end, there's going to be a legislative wrap-up and, you know, what happened? And what it means to the district. And that's on Monday, June fourteenth from eleven AM to twelve fifteen PM. So if you're around on, on Tuesday, April 6th, and you want to speak out about the, uh, raising the one percent to the two percent. Is another opportunity.
Okay, very good. Um, Mike, regional educational programming?
So our committee, uh, focused mostly on assessment and, um, the board had a presentation by the administration already on that topic. Um, kind of wanted to get a, um, take the pulse of what's been going on. Because as you can imagine with COVID, assessment and instruction in general has, has changed dramatically over the past year. Um, and just want to applaud the, the teachers for really having to be very creative in how they approach assessment and looking at it in a different way, um, in many cases. Um, we also talked about the fact that, um, state mandated, uh, testing is going to be up and running this spring. Um, in fact, uh, Megan, I believe the, wasn't the SAT just administered by the district?
Yeah, on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, yeah. And that'll continue. I'm, I'm sure there's probably another three or four coming up before the, uh, school year ends. Um, and so all that data will be collected.
Mike?
Yeah.
You and your committee, I know Justin is on your committee. Are you overall satisfied with the operation of the district from your committee's point of view?
I, I, I believe, um, we are. I, I think one of the frustrations for any of us is that. You know, typically with, with instruction and assessment, you're looking at long-term data, Jim, right? You, you, you want to feel confident that you're moving in the right direction. Well, thank goodness, the pandemic has only lasted for a little. Changes that we've made, some of which were planned, I believe, before the pandemic. Are, are starting to show some results, but I don't think we're, none of us are, are confident enough to, to go to the board with, um. A lot of heavy evidence that we can present to say, we've made a significant shift in in improvements in instruction or assessment.
Okay.
I thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, we'll move on to finance and operations. Alex?
Uh, yeah, is now the time you want me to go into the audit?
Sure.
Okay. Here we go. Act two. Hopefully there's not a third act. Um, on Thursday, uh, March twenty-fifth, uh, Megan, Nicole, I and Erica from Charles Heavens and Company met. Uh, those are our auditors. They've been our auditors for many years. Um, Erica has actually done our books for the last five years. Uh, the first thing I want to say is we got a clean opinion. No deficiencies. Uh, if you look at page sixty-six, you will see that we got all checks on the right of correct columns. So, uh, while this is not unusual for a school. It's still good to hear. Um, uh, Erica went on to commend the staff for the, how great they were to work with and how flexible they were. Um, uh, some of these, uh, meetings and stuff took, uh, uh, occurred on weekends even. Um, and, uh, uh. Just, I don't know how many of you have gone through the audit. Um, I doubt whether, uh, it doesn't make good reading. Let me put it that way. But there are several different accounting formats. There's the budgeting format that we're all familiar with. Then there's a fund format, a federal format, and a state format. Because we get over three hundred thousand from the state, we have to fill out their, uh, uh, audits also. Each is slightly different. And they are all addressed in the, uh, report. And then where there's a difference, they show the reason for the difference and it all justifies out in the end. Uh, one request that, uh, Erica had was that we clean up the cafeteria fund. Uh, which we are doing or, or have done. I'm not quite sure of that. Uh, it's been allowed to sit on our books for far too long. If you only get a chance to look at two pages of, of the, uh, audit, I would recommend looking at page forty-nine. And you don't need to do that right now. Uh. Under variances, you will see that the revenue came in three hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and nine dollars above the budgeted number. That's the revenue. That's good. It's above. Also, under variances, you'll see the expenditures came in nine hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars below the budgeted number. Once again, good. Uh, this though is somewhat misleading because there were about, uh, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of negative expenses. What are negative expenses? Well, those are things like the release of encumbrances and recon, uh, reconciliation of, of prior balances previous to, uh, two thousand nineteen. Uh, giving you an example, the money for the outdoor riding ring, since the, uh, board had approved two hundred and eighty thousand for that, that had to be carried on the books as an expense. Well, that expired, so that encumbrance was added back in. So two hundred and eighty thousand of it, uh, was, uh, was, uh, uh, a negative expense. Um. The excess of the revenue over expenditures and transfers came to a million thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Uh, after reserve funds for capital and, uh, non-recurring expenses and the school cafeteria fund. The second page that would be worth looking at is page sixteen. Sixteen includes all the major funds, uh, plus other government funds. Uh. We have other funds that contribute to our income and our operating costs. So the operating cost is not the amount that we're necessarily asking the town for. It's the net of other income that we have from the other funds. Um, they are not part of the budget. Um, uh, you can see that the capital fund, uh, project fund will increase both the revenue and the expense lines greatly. Uh, the difference of, uh, of the accounting or cross-reference justified, which I said. Um, I will ask Nicole to go over pages if anyone has any questions about it. Um, one bit of really good news is our pension liability is about ninety-five percent funded. This is the highest funding that Erica saw in the seven schools that she audits. Um, those of you who are familiar with, uh, pension funds will realize how exceptional this is. Uh, the town of Waterbury has thirty percent funded. The Teamsters are just over fifty percent funded. So to be a ninety-five percent funding is quite exceptional. Um, at this point, uh, uh, I'm going to open up for questions. Uh, and those that I can't answer, I'm going to refer to Megan, to Nicole, and to John. Uh, I support the budget and feel that we should approve it. Thank you.
Okay, um, the, Alex, I assume also that, uh, if you look at page sixty-six, the fact that they didn't identify any material weaknesses, sufficient deficiencies, non-compliances, um, weaknesses and other types of, of items would seem to me that we're in a pretty strong, uh. Financial position as a result of that and our finances actually, uh, check out. That's the purpose of the audit.
I think the word that she used was it's a clean opinion.
Yep. Anyone else?
John, you and I had talked a little bit about this. And John also, uh, felt that, uh, he was the one that thought page sixty-six was important. He also thought that majors maybe six through eight. Uh, if you're interested, it, it shows our assets and liabilities. Um, there would be, would be pages that would be worth going over. Um, and John, I don't know if you'd like to talk to those.
No, you addressed it pretty well. Um, you're right, uh, page sixty-six and, and even, uh, before Erica, Charles Heaven himself said that this, uh, this checklist says everything you need to know about the, the layman needs to know about the budget. You're right, seventy-two pages long. You'd more or less have to be a CPA to, to fully understand and interpret the whole analysis. But, um, uh, yeah, and I think one of the best parts about the whole, uh, audit was Charles Heaven has not raised their price in, in, in three years now. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole. For twenty-five thousand dollars.
Um, the last agreement that we entered into with them in twenty nineteen does raise their contracted price by three percent a year. Although their bills don't always match the contracted price depending on how much time they spend with us. So sometimes they come in a little bit lower.
Well, this is all good news. By the way, both of you referred to budget. I think you meant to say audit, so.
No, no, I meant the budget. There's, the audit, audits us by our budget, by the fund, by the Fed, and by the state.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Yeah.
Right, you are. Okay. Um, if no one has any further questions, there's an action item on the agenda, which is a motion to accept. Where I'd be seeking a motion to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty, Region Twelve Annual Audit Report is recommended by the Finance and Operations Committee. If no one has any objection, why don't we bring that forward? Well, this is fresh in our minds right now. And I'll ask if anyone wants to make that motion. It's John. Uh, John?
Make a motion to accept the, uh, twenty, 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 twenty-one audit. Twenty?
Twenty twenty. Fiscal year twenty twenty audit, yeah. Okay, a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, further discussion. Uh, Sue, do you want to take a roll call?
Okay. Joe?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Alex?
Hi.
Justin?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Lisa?
Yes, I.
Mike?
Hi.
Julie?
Hi.
Pete? Pete?
You're muted, Pete.
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you. Mary?
Hi.
And Greg?
Hi.
Passes twelve to nothing unanimously.
Okay. Well, we'll go back to committee reports. Thank you, Alex. We'll go back to committee reports, labor negotiations. Jim?
No report.
Okay. Uh, strategic long-range planning. Julie?
Yes, we haven't had a meeting, but we did. Megan and I asked our board leadership advice on how to move forward with our long-range planning process of hiring a consultant. There were wide variations in the amount that the consultants were charging. Um, bottom line is we decided to postpone that for a year. So we're not going to formally engage a consultant for a year. And instead, the committee's going to focus the next year on our marketing init- initiatives. So that's what we decided last week and we have our next meeting, uh, next week.
Okay.
That's all.
That mean you're not going to spend the twenty-five thousand that's budgeted?
If there's a line item from long-range planning consultant, that is correct.
Comes under the Board of Ed, which I wanted to get that number down.
Don't worry, we have to do marketing.
Boom. All right, Jim, you had something?
Well, I just wanted to say to Julie, I assume you're taking into your calculus the fact that Megan's got a hundred and some odd applications that she can't fit right now. I know, I know next year is next year and the year after that, we have to deal with long-term. I, I understand, but.
Yeah, certainly. And for example, one of the things we're trying to get done is new signs for our buildings, things like that, that are essential regardless of the number of applications, but.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure that the work, no, that the work you've done so far is in part responsible for what the results you're seeing.
One thing that, um, Julie did, did, uh, mention to us in that, in that meeting was the strong desire to, to keep that momentum going. In other words, if, if this is a short-term bump due to COVID that we're experiencing in our applications, well, we don't want that, that positive message to get lost once, hope to God, COVID is over, that we're going to continue to, to see um, an interest in, in the success story of Region 12.
Agreed.
Point.
Absolutely. And Julie, I know we've, we've thanked, uh, you and your committee many times for this logo, but I got to tell you. I really liked it when it first came out. Now I like it even more.
Yep, you're here.
I think this was just tremendous. And the more I see it, the happier it makes.
Yeah, I agree. We really took a long time to get there, but we got there and I think we're all very pleased with it.
No, it's time well spent. It's, it's really impressive and I think it makes us, uh, the, puts a nice face on our region. It really does. Okay, um.
Greg?
Yes.
Greg? Uh, I don't mean to interrupt, but before we move on. On the committee reports, wouldn't it be profitable for the Board of Ed to have the building committee give us a report? Uh, periodically, uh, having looked at what's going on with the building committee. We're not getting, unless you go to the meeting, they're really not on our agenda for monthly meetings. Wouldn't it be profitable to, uh, with all the issues they're dealing with, to keep the board updated on exactly what's going on?
We could. We could put it on the next meeting agenda.
Yeah, just to give us an update. Yeah.
By and large, the, the situation is that the fact that the building committee still exists much greaves the building committee. Uh, you know, because it's just taking forever to get the last little dribs and drabs here. Where our, our, our punch list is, I think, back to getting smaller again. It kept, kept getting bigger for a while.
Yeah.
Not smaller, but we're, we're getting there. We have a couple of issues that are of significant nature we have to deal with. And I hope we'll, we'll be able to deal with them by the next meeting. Um, it's, um.
Well, what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking of is that people in the public do ask us sometime, the last board members. Um, and I'm just saying, it'd be good to board members.
Um, it, and I'm just saying, it'd be good to board members have knowledge of exactly what the building committee is dealing with, or what some of the issues, or where they are on the, the whole issue. Just so board members have some knowledge of exactly what's going on.
No, I think that's a fine suggestion. Uh, we'll, we'll put it on for, I think, the next meeting because, uh, I don't want to drag everybody through, uh, the.
Right, the same.
Today.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to put a, we'll put a presentation together because we're almost done, is the bottom line. But it's, it's just the idea that we're still there. We just can't seem to get the ball over the goal line, uh, in terms of these last little dribs and drabs. I mean, there, this, it's, it's relatively small stuff at this point. We have a couple significant things, but I think we're gonna resolve those shortly, and, uh, that's gonna get us, I think, to the finish line at least. That's what we're, that's what we're hoping. Um, but there, there's, there's still some ongoing work, and there will be work done this summer to solve an, an issue with the floors uh, in some of the, the facilities that need to be, uh, that need to be solved because of some slippery conditions. Um, you know, it's, it's always a learning process when you build something, but I think we're in relatively good shape. We're still, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Nicole, we are still under budget. Um, and, uh, although we're way late on finishing the job, but.
Great.
That's where we are. Okay, let's move on to new business. Uh, first item we have is use of Esser Fund plan.
Hi. Um, so, the Esser Funds is the Recovery Act funds that have been given to district, districts across Connecticut. Um, and there are some districts who received dollars into the millions. Um, I believe, uh, some of the inner-city districts received as much as forty million dollars. Um, we received a hundred thousand. So, um, you know, in, I know a lot of, you may hear of different forums that were happening, and how do they spend the money, and, and public conversations. Region Twelve did not receive a, a windfall of money. So, I do want to talk about, um, how we are planning to utilize the money because, um, it's specifically, uh, based on education that was impacted by COVID. So, I just want to share with the board, uh, our plans and what we're looking to do. So, as again, this is our recovery dollars. Um, and we are going to have to spend the hundred-six thousand dollars by September twenty twenty-three. Um, the funding that you receive is based on your Title I allotment, and specifically, that is the amount of students who receive free and reduced lunch. Um, are, they take a look at economic disadvantage, and, uh, they base the allotments based on that. And obviously, um, as we know, our children, um, do, are, are not facing some of the economic challenges that are seen in other districts. Um, and so, to know that what we're gonna be able to do with a hundred-six thousand dollars is more about an enrichment, and how do we capture some of that lost learning. So, there were funding requirements. Um, you had to look at it from, um, the standpoint of it had to fall within the four categories, which is social-emotional recovery, academic recovery, uh, technology needs, how do you, uh, cover the technical divide, and, um, PPE needs. And again, there is a timeline for this funding. So, what, um, in a conversation with, uh, Ally, with Nicole, with our elementary school principals, what we recognized is that one of the victims of COVID was kindergarten readiness. And actually, um, John Boniano really spoke to this when we talked about not being able to provide reach on a wide-scale, um, uh, wide-scale enrollment this year. So, what we are proposing and what we're looking to do with the funding is to create kindergarten readiness camps. And this will occur both this summer as well as next summer. It will be a six-week summer program in which students will be able to get some of those readiness skills, including number-letter identifications, getting how to write their name, how do you sit in a circle, how do you share, uh, social interactions. Um, we are going to try to have this be thematic, so that way, if we can incorporate some activities into it, whether it's artistic in nature or it's physical activity, we want it to feel like it is also fun and engaging for our youngest learners. Um, because of this being a grant that is provided for us, this will be free of cost to our families for the six weeks. Uh, the costs and where the money will go is the cost of two teachers for this time, two paraprofessionals, um, materials, as well as any acts, outside activities, meaning if we have a speaker come in, or if we utilize some of the groups that can come in and do some play-based learning, uh, we want to make certain that that's available. Um, and any additional funding that is not utilized will be, um, certainly brought to enhanced technology. So, that is what our plan is. It is not as grandiose because it's not a, a large amount of money. Um, I know that some districts, um, are actually worried because they may bring on interventionists for utilizing this money. And the problem is, is when it's a short term, it means that, uh, you're gonna use up the funding, and then that position will go away. I think for us, looking at the recovery, looking at early childhood education, and building up our, um, our learning recovery really from the ground for floor, literally when they enter into schools, I think is our best use of this funding. So, um, I certainly welcome any feedback, any thoughts from the board as far as the plan for how to spend the money that we will be receiving from federal grants.
A hundred and six thousand doesn't go very far.
Right. It, it, it doesn't. And so, that's where I, I think we can get the, the biggest boost utilizing the dollars this way.
But it sounds like, Megan, you've, you've created a, you, with the limited funds available, you, you found a targeted use for it, and, and given us something that's gonna have a good programmatic effect. So, it's, it's a good use of the funds.
Well, I, I appreciate you saying that, and I think, I, I know the decision that was, that tore us all apart in the fall, um, and that we had to revisit when we weren't able to have our, our four-year-olds come to school. I think this really goes to answer some of that, how are we gonna make certain they're ready for kindergarten? So.
All right. Um, Lisa?
I, I too think that's an excellent use of funds, Megan, that you've kind of put together that program. And I'm sure that the parents are gonna be very appreciative, um, of your efforts to do that, because you're right, that was the, um, the group that probably lost out the most, um, during all of this. So, I, I think that's an excellent project or program.
Thank you.
Well, uh, if there's nothing else on, on, on Esser, let's move on to the prom and end-of-year activities.
Um, well, um, we are gonna have some end-of-year activities, gen pody. Um, so, um, just so you know, we are looking to, uh, see what activities we can do. Um, in talking with the administrative team, there's a strong desire to bring back aloha, and, and what are some of the ways we can do this? Where we're controlling for some of the, um, activities, and how do we make it fun and engaging and safe? Um, additionally, we are looking to have an eighth-grade graduation. Um, when I say these words out loud, we are looking to have them in person at, and I have to say these words, and I hate saying it, but it is a COVID, at this time, um, but we are looking to hold those things in person. Um, we know that for the senior, um, graduation, we are looking to hold, again, the in-person. I think last year, um, the grand success of that graduation, we are looking to mirror that and see if we can even create a little bit more wow factor into it, but, um, certainly looking to capture those opportunities. Um, we wanna have the fun. We wanna have the activities. We wanna have the celebrations. Um, but we also recognize that it's a calculated risk which, with each part of it. So, um, we, I can tell you that the, as soon as we said that we were going to go with this, the, uh, principals immediately started planning, having conversations with one another, what were the safety guidelines, checking to make certain what the other ones were doing, whether it's gonna be a picnic style, or, you know, they're trying to make certain that we are in line and in step, because we want to make certain that there's a feeling of celebration, not a feeling of disappointment, because someone got something bigger, or someone got something better. And so, making certain that we've got common celebrations that is honoring, um, our students. So, those will be taking place. But I, I, I have to absolutely right now celebrate our three selectmen and Kim Gallo and their efforts for prom. We have to thank Jim Britton, Curtis Reed, and Barbara Henry, because what they are doing is providing an opportunity for prom, and not just an opportunity, it is just for our seniors. I, I do need to preface that. But it is free to our seniors because of their efforts. Um, and because of this, I, we know that this couldn't happen in a bubble. They networked. They found people who could help us. So, I also need to thank, um, Tim and Stephanie Gracia, because they're letting us use the Spring Hill Vineyard for this placement. So, the kids are going to have an absolute, under-the-stars, gorgeous, safe, wonderful prom. Um, I can't do it the justice that Kim can, because she has been working so hard with the planning. So, Kim, would you mind sharing with the board some of the things that are going on? Because it is truly a celebration of the community and celebrating our kids. So, Kim?
I'm happy to do that. Um, when Megan first came to me and said, "The three selectmen are looking to, to do this for our students," and, but then, there's the restrictions. There's no dates, or there's this, or there's that. And I, I wondered, is this gonna, I, I love that they're doing this. It's so special that they want to do this, but are our kids gonna love it? And then, Chris Chagru talked to me on the very first day that we announced this, and she, she overheard our seniors talking just in a corner, and they, they referred to it as a dream come true. And if you know high school students at all, they don't really talk that way often. But they were very, very excited and very grateful that this was being done for them. So, what we're trying to do is to look at what can we do, what can we do safely, and what's within the boundaries of the real generosity that's being given to us. And it's, it's coming out very, very nicely. Um, so, Spring Hill Vineyards, I try not to say vineyards too much, because it is seniors in high school, but it, it's a beautiful, beautiful venue. And they have this, this barn, and it also has beautiful glass garage doors that open up. So, where we can eat is an area that is open to the air. So, there's lots and lots of ventilation. And then, uh, Barbara Henry got Big Wave involved, and they talked about putting extra tables out on the grounds and putting a portable dance floor, so that you're literally dancing under the stars. And yes, you're dancing in a mask, and no, you can't have a slow dance, but honestly, our kids just think it's the coolest thing ever. And they're very, very excited about that. So, as we talk about this, it, it is very, very exciting for our kids. And, um, as our advisors, Tara Flaherty and Jim Stinson, are talking about this with our kids, they are generating a lot of enthusiasm and a community feeling that is really hard to describe, because no one anticipated that we would be in a pandemic at this time. And in that pandemic, we're, uh, creating this wonderful evening for our kids. So, it, it's, it's really very special, and I'm very lucky to be a part of it. Megan has created a, um, a force among our, our selectmen that is very, very strong and supportive of our students, and we get to ride along with that. And it's, it's going very, very well.
Well said. Um, I think this is exciting. I can't wait to see how it comes down, and, uh, we're, we're looking for the, looking for the movies, uh, the Ben Allen productions to give us an idea of how, about when.
I'd say we're all invited, but really, no.
Can I, I can't chaperone?
Well, the, the other thing I hope, now that we, now that we're reducing the age for access to the vaccine as of April one to sixteen, um, I'm hoping that a lot of our kids, uh, especially our, you know, obviously, our seniors and juniors will be able to, be able to be vaccinated and be able to help stop the spread of this thing, and to make, and help us really get a large measure of normalcy back to ourselves. So, I, I hope that comes out very well. Okay, well, um, that is the end of the agenda, except for an executive session. So, at this point, I would look for a motion, uh, to go into its executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Oh, move.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Jim. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, all those abstaining, I believe it's unanimous. That's the two-thirds we needed. So, we're in executive session.